Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight’s meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Welcome to the October meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our September 17 meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. Are there any suggested -- well, let me first note, there are a couple of changes that we need to make. The first, with respect to the list of absent members, it has been reported to me that Joseph Kaliko of District 11, who’s reported being absent, was actually present and voted. We will check that and correct the minutes when they come out. The minutes of this meeting, which will come out in December, will reflect that change, assuming we confirm that. On page nine of 12, in the third paragraph there, third line, it says, “Begin Selectmen in quotes,” and then says, “Delete the coma,” that of course is delete the comma, two Ms.[121.22][121.22](Laughter). Are there any other suggested changes to our minutes? Mr. Clark, District 7.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow delegates. Just a couple of small ones. On the first page, third paragraph, I think Emil Bennie is B-E-N-N-I-E, and probably that should be in quotes. That’s how I usually see him referred to. And secondly, on the third page, halfway down, the moderator announced that the combined items should probably be combined items. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further suggested changes to our minutes? All right. Those three editorial, or rather typographical, changes, the one I suggested on comma and the two Mr. Clark suggested, are there any objections to making those changes? Hearing none. Those may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Any further changes to our minutes? All right. Absent objection. The minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Joan Caldwell, Chair of District 10.
Mr. Moderator, Members of Town Meeting. Each of the districts should have in it by now, a copy of a green sheet that looks like this, with a separate instruction form. I got them from the Registrar of Voters so that you would be able to see exactly what the ballot is going to look like in your district on Election Day, November 6. We are going to be handed a single sheet of paper printed on two sides. The first side has the positions from First Selectmen through the nominees for the Board of Assessment and Appeals. On the reverse side will be the constables and the RTM. So we must remember to tell our friends and our family and anyone else that we know to vote both sides of the ballot. We are on the backside, and we have worked very hard to put enough nominees before the general public so that we can vote a full RTM in next November. It’s an easy ballot. It sort of follows the lines in color. Just remember that it’s up to us to carry the message wherever we can to vote both sides of the ballot.
Thank you. Bob Richardson, Chair of the Special Committee on the Nathaniel Witherell.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. The Special Committee on the Nathaniel Witherell met shortly before this meeting began in order to approve our final report, which is a report on Project Renew Witherell, completing our work. Copies of that report are being printed and will be distributed to you on next Monday evening, October 29. We also adopted another resolution this evening, the resolved clause of which says, quote, “That the Special Committee respectfully requests that the moderator discharge the committee from any additional duties and expresses its appreciation to the moderator, the members of the Representative Town Meeting, the directors, management, and staff of Nathaniel Witherell, several of whom I note are here this evening, and all other officials in town government who have assisted or contributed to our work. We did not expect to serve as long as we have, but we are glad that we did. Studying an important community institution like Witherell has been like participating in an extended B-school case with plenty of substantive issues, plus a swirling cast of characters, and a whole range of human emotions, usually publicly expressed in the newspapers. Yet the interests of the elderly residents at Witherell required our careful attention. We, the original fourteen members now reduced to eleven, learned a great deal, and we hope to have contributed some value in return. We came to appreciate each other’s capabilities and views, and we bonded together as a team, the better and happier for the experience, for which we are grateful to one another. Indeed, Mr. Moderator, service is its own reward, especially volunteer service. Now, Mr. Moderator, the committee rests.[459.53][459.53](Applause).
Mr. Richardson, as to the committee’s request to be discharged, I will take that under advisement.[481.00][481.00](Laughter). I will have more to say about the committee’s work in December. So thank you for that report. Mr. Richardson referenced a meeting next week, Monday, October 29. I hope that’s not a surprise to anyone. We unfortunately were squeezed by the timing of an arbitrator’s report on the teacher contract. It only came out at the end of last week, not giving us sufficient time to include it in our agenda tonight. Now, I understand the frustration that some of you have expressed about coming out again one week later for a special meeting. But I hope everyone understands that the authority that we are given to be the final approval for fiscal affairs in town, including collective bargaining agreements, which, with respect to collective bargaining agreements, even the BET is not involved in, that is delegated solely to the legislative body, which is us. And it would be presumptuous of me to assume what this body wants to do. So I believe it is my duty to provide the RTM an opportunity to exercise its authority under the statute to reject a binding arbitration award. Recognizing that we may not do that, and our meeting next week may be relatively brief, but given the importance of the task, I think that there was no avoiding our holding that meeting on the 29th. And what we have done, the committees that will consider this include education, labor contracts, and the Finance Committee. They have scheduled meetings for next Wednesday. I believe they’re taking place at the Havermyer Building. Education and Finance, I believe, are meeting at 7:30 on Wednesday evening, and Labor Contracts at, is it 5:30? At the Havermyer Building. So any interested members are certainly invited to attend those meetings for informational purposes. Given that there will only be that one item before us next week, we have, as we have done in the past with special meetings, reserved rooms for our districts to meet immediately prior to the October 29 RTM meeting at eight o’clock. And those are reserved, I believe, as early as seven o’clock. Is that correct? District 6, at its district meeting last week, voted to meet at 7:30. Stephen Meskers, thank you for that motion. So you have an option. If you don’t think you’re going to need a full hour, you can certainly schedule those district meetings later. If you want to meet before Monday, you can certainly do that. That will be up to the districts. But currently, that is how that special meeting is situated. One final comment before we get into tonight’s agenda. Oh, actually, I’m sorry. I neglected to recognize Jim Lash, who, unless he joins us next week, this may be his last meeting before us as our First Selectman.
Mr. Moderator, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. It was not my plan to address you this evening, but I have the pleasure of introducing you to John Crary, if John will stand, who is the new Town Administrator. John joined us a month ago.[714.01][714.01](Applause). John comes to us from Darien, where he was for a little over five years, and before that he had a long career in Scarsdale. He spent his whole life in city and town management and brings a broad range of experiences. And I’ve seen in the last four weeks how quickly he’s coming up to speed. I think he’s now met with almost all the departments, and I know he spent some time with the Budget Overview Committee representatives, so he’s on his way to getting to know you, and I’m sure you’ll all get to know him as time goes by. The other thing that I would mention is that there is tomorrow night the first of several public hearings on the capital improvement plan. I know that that’s a matter of intense interest every year, and certainly this year, and I encourage you to come to the Cone Room at seven o’clock tomorrow night and have an opportunity to discuss the capital plan in its current form. You can find that information in the budget book that you had back in May when you voted on the budget. We’ll be discussing the items that were listed for this next year, as well as any other items that anyone wants to bring up. So again, I encourage you to come. And finally, I would say to you that although we haven’t always agreed about everything, the moderator has reminded me on several occasions that you granted almost all my wishes along the way over the years, and I thank you for that. And while I think that the healthy debate of items is important to a democracy, and particularly in a town like Greenwich where we have a lot of very smart, very experienced people donating their time for the betterment of all, I want to make sure that I thank all of you for the time that you and I have had a chance to spend together. And perhaps I will reappear in some other form in some other time, but not right now. Thank you very much.[826.19][826.19](Laughter) (Applause).
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Edwards.
Thank you. Next Monday night, is there a scheduled Rise Committee with Districts 9 and 10 at Glenville School? Has there been any discussion to reschedule that in light of the meetings at the RTM?
Not with me. Ms. Caldwell?
Mr. Moderator, can I answer Mrs. Edwards’ question?
All right, let me just repeat the question. The question was, there is a meeting that now conflicts with our special meeting scheduled for next week, and this has to do with the Rise Committee?
DOCD.
Okay, I think I heard the Rise.
It’s DOCD.
Okay, so it’s a meeting on the plan of conservation and development, the drafting of that plan with two of our districts, is that?
Yes.
All right, well, my answer was, no one has approached me about it. Ms. Caldwell?
I approached the town planner, and that meeting has been scheduled an hour later. We will start at eight o’clock instead of seven o’clock, which should give us enough time to deal with our business here, and those of us who wish to go to that meeting have time to get Glennville. We’re going to keep it open until 10 p.m.
Thank you.
All right, so the answer was, that meeting has been rescheduled to begin at eight o’clock and will be held open until 10:00. So presumably, members who come to the special RTM meeting will have time to attend that meeting at Glenville School. Okay. The last comment that I wanted to make was that our elections for the new term will be held in November. I then hold an orientation session for new members. That will likely be scheduled the week after Thanksgiving, as it turns out. But notice will go out, and any member returning, certainly the new members are encouraged to attend that, any returning member is invited to attend. But what I wanted to say tonight, in the event that I don’t have an opportunity to raise this with you, we will hold our organizational meetings for the new term at district meetings held prior to our December meeting. And I wanted to emphasize the importance of those organizational meetings, at which we elect the officers of our districts and the delegates and alternates to our standing committees. And as I will indicate at the orientation session, and you may have heard me say in the past, I think with the size of our membership, it is important, with all of the positions, leadership positions we have in the districts and committees, that we spread those out among as many members as possible. And in my mind, that means that one person not hold multiple leadership positions on the standing committees and districts. And I think it also important, as a result of the debate we had relating to the Charter Revision Committee work, that we give particular attention, special attention, to who we select as delegates to our standing committees. It’s important work. It ought not be simply a position handed out to a returning member who may or may not have been doing a job satisfactory to the district. So since I will not have an opportunity really to bring this up with you formally, I did want to mention that. Let’s give that organization meeting in December some real thought, and talk among yourselves as to what it is you’re thinking of doing, what you think would benefit your district, the RTM, and of course, then the town. All right, that now brings us to the call for tonight’s meeting. Since we have such a short agenda, only six listed items, I am informed tonight that Item 3 has been withdrawn. That was the nomination of an individual to be a regular member of Inland Wetlands. That has been withdrawn. And Item 6 had notice of that withdrawal had previously circulated. So that leaves for us to consider Items 1, 2, 4, and 5. And there really is no need for consent calendar with such a short agenda. Items 1 and 2, dealing with the Community Development Program, have always been combined. So procedurally, we will need a motion to suspend the rules to do that. I will suggest one shortly. And then, after disposing of those two items, we would take up Items 4 and 5 separately. Okay. So in order to combine items for voting purposes, we need a motion to suspend the rules. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules to combine Items 1 and 2? A motion to suspend the rules to combine Items 1 and 2 for voting purposes have been moved and seconded. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules to combine Items 1 and 2 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion has carried. We will begin with, well, why don’t we have both items presented to us? Princess Urfe, who is the new Community Development Administrator, welcome and congratulations.[1196.23][1196.23](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Item number one is the Resolution of the Board of Estimate and Taxation authorizing the appropriation of the funds for the Community Development Block Grant Program for year 2008. The anticipated funds include about $950,000 of entitlement grant, $16,334 of reprogrammed funds, and $38,718 of loan repayment, for a total of about $1,5052. Item number two is the Resolution of the First Selectmen, seeking the RTM’s authorization to apply for and accept the CDBG funds. These resolutions are hereby submitted for RTM approval.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the two resolutions? The resolutions number one and two have been moved and seconded. We will take up the committee reports first, and then if anything further needs to be said. Because these items require a public hearing, I will open the public hearing now, and any member of the public, of course, is invited to comment on these when we get to the discussion portion. All right, we will begin with, which committee would like to go first? Pamela Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests. These are, the committee reviewed and voted on Items 1 and 2 together, as is traditional for us. Item 1 being the BET approval of the appropriation without decrease or omission, and authorizing the First Selectmen to accept the HUD grants. On Item 2, the RTM seeks the RTM approval for the CDBG action plan, and this would become the final plan to be submitted to HUD. The appropriation, as noted, is for $1,5052. If the entitlement of $950,000 is less than, is being requested, or the loan repayment is less than, is noted, the proposed allocations will be reduced on a proportionate basis, while maintaining the required 15 percent cap on public services allocation and 20 percent on administrative cost. The projects were ranked and allocated by a committee, which was composed of representatives from the 12 districts and community representatives. Changes from the prior year include the inclusion, again, of dental centers of Stanford, as well as the overnight counseling program for kids in crisis. The Housing Authority submitted three applications, one of which was funded for $400,000, and that is to replace windows at the McKinnney Terrace. The grant is a return of tax revenues to the community for community development. The vote of the committee was 12-0-0 in favor for both items. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Isaacson, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We too met with Princess Urfe to explain the Community Development Block Grant recommendation. Under public service, there are two agencies receiving funds, as we understood it, that were not on the list last year. They are the Boys and Girls Club Project Learn Character Development, which is receiving $10,000, and the Community Health Center, Dental Center of Stanford, receiving $6,000. That Dental Center of Stanford does provide services to Greenwich residents. We’ve already heard the block grant can equal no more than, this part of the block grant can equal no more than 15 percent of the total by law. And administrative costs are 14.21 percent. The $400,000 for window replacement at McKinnney Terrace is the largest single item under the other part of the rehabilitation acquisition grant. The other items generally run in the $30,000 to $40,000 range. As usual, we found these grants to have been well researched by a group of advisors from all parts of Greenwich and representatives from several government and nonprofit entities. Our vote was 10-0-0, with Districts 9 and 11 absent.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. Our committee took up this matter last Monday evening. Speaking on behalf of these items was Princess Urfe, who confirmed that the resolutions, the wording of them are the same as in past years, except as to the amounts of the monies to be received and dispersed, and the dates for the contract. The previous two speakers have provided all the same information that I was about to, so our vote on this item was 11-0-0, District 11 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Items 1 and 2. Jim Boutel, District 8.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I have served on the Community Development Advisory Committee, and welcome. Princess is the new Administrator of the program. Besides giving these grants out throughout the year, they audit the monies that we spend. I just wanted to take one moment to acknowledge Nancy Brown. Nancy headed this program for years. Other communities who could be eligible for this money didn’t get their money because they didn’t have somebody of the caliber of Nancy Brown. And I, for one, and I hope the RTM would join me in saluting the many years of service that Nancy Brown gave to the town of Greenwich.[1592.13][1592.13](Applause).
Thank you. Further discussion on Items 1 and 2.
Flash.
All right. At this time, any member of the public, of course, is welcome to address us as part of the public hearing. Seeing no interested speakers, I will, at this point, close the public hearing and ask the district chairs to mark your voting cards, Items 1 and 2, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item 4 now comes before us. Bill Kowalski, Director of Nathaniel Witherell.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you. I present to you Item Number 4, as is written in your call, and give it to you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 4 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Jerry Isaacson, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Kowalski gave us an overview of the Witherell request to transfer budgeted funds of $150,000 from a media channel account to the person-centered satellite dining arrangement, which will cost $144,000. Also in attendance, David Ornsby, Ray Augustine, and Jack Hornak. There have been complaints that food temperature has not been maintained at the proper level for residents from the family council, and indeed, from the last state inspection. By moving food in bulk from a central kitchen to the five floors, the food will not be plated until ready to serve, and residents will have a two-hour window to request service. The expenditure will be for warming equipment for each of the five floors, as well as for dishwashers on each of the floors, and some other smaller items. They expect to see savings in electricity and other lines of the budget. Our vote was 10-0-0, with Districts 9 and 11 absent. And with your indulgence, Mr. Moderator, while our committee had these gentlemen from Witherell with us, we asked them if they would give us a brief overview of the progress toward Project Renew, which they did. The Building Committee meets twice a month, has formed five subcommittees: Architect Selection, Construction Manager Selection, Legal Task Force, Finance Committee, and Certificate of Need. The Architect and Construction Manager search will begin as soon as the Town Purchasing Department approves the process. The Legal Task Force will decide whether this aspect can be handled in-house or with outside counsel. None of the $7.3 million that we authorized in May has been spent while the objectives and specifications are being developed, but this will soon change. One other note- One other note: Most of the Certificate of Need will be done in-house, and will not cost anywhere near the $1 million that the last one did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isaacson. Pamela Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests. This item was presented by William Kowalski, as well as key executives. It is the appropriation as stated for $143,943 to support satellite dining at the Nathaniel Withersall. The objective is to improve the residents' personal care through improving the provision of dining services. Dining will be decentralized to each of five floors, where food will be plated for an extended two-hour period. This compares to the current centralized plating and distribution, with only a one-half-hour window, which results in colder food upon arrival, lack of customized choices, and a narrow eating window. This item also provides for greater adherence to health codes, including correcting a health department deficiency that occurred this summer, and improving the overall quality assurance for residents. Further, this provides a reduction in operating costs, greater energy efficiency, which will also reduce cooking costs. Existing pantries on each floor will be remodeled to accommodate new equipment, which will then be reused in Project Renew, and staff will be deployed and stationed on each floor. There is no anticipated disruption of services, which will be a component of the RFP requirements. Bidding will take place in April 2008, with projected completion by July 2008. The vote was 12-0-0, with the committee strongly in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Four. Mr. Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. Some additional factors that we reviewed that led us in this direction. First, a few words about person-centered care. Person-centered care is the direction that Withersall has been moving in for several years now. It's a type of care that supports more autonomy and individual choice amongst its residents. It predominates now in our nursing departments, and in our Recreation Therapy and Social Work Department. This will give us an opportunity now to expand that to our Dining Services Department, where we will indeed, as was mentioned, go from a very centralized, traditional tray-line food service system currently, to a very decentralized, five-feeding station pantry system, and the equipment that we're asking for tonight will give us the ability to do that. A second reason is, in fact, as was mentioned, the State of Connecticut recommendation that we were missing some of our food temperature targets. This will give us the ability to hit those targets, and will become part of that state plan of correction. Thirdly, our quality assurance indicators in the long-term care arena have, as is indicated, not only food temperatures, but other outcome measurements, resident elopements, pressure sores, turnover rate, and infection rate, so this is another quality assurance indicator target that we will use in our quality assurance program. Number four, and very importantly to us, is the quality of life and the freedom of choice that was mentioned. This will give each of our residents a larger window of opportunity for each of the three meals per day, and the ability to come and eat and dine at an hour more suitable to their lifestyle. As was mentioned, number five, this is budget neutral. We have decided to defer an item that we have a lot of passion for, and that's our Withersall channel. This will be installed instead of the Withersall channel. The Withersall channel will be something that we intend to bring to your, for your approval in the near future. It was mentioned, as number six, that our operating costs will be reduced, and we do believe that we can have some payroll and efficiency, energy, and heating costs reduced. We will be eliminating steam tables, which throw off a lot of heat and create the need for a lot of air conditioning. Seventhly, is our service excellence results, and there is no question that three areas that are important to our residents are nursing care, recreation therapy, and the dining experience, and this is another area that will help us improve our service excellence scores. Lastly, is operational accountability. We will be able to now assign our food service workers to each of the pantries, and they'll be able to begin to see and relate to and establish relationships with the residents that they serve, and we believe that this will result in a greater outcome and level of service to those residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on Item Four. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number Four, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item Number Five now comes before us. Peter Crumbine, Selectman.
Good evening, members of the RTM, Mr. Moderator, guests. Item Number Five, resolved that the sum of $54,100 is hereby appropriated to the account numbers listed below, subject to the establishment of a not-for-profit corporation by Channel 79. Said appropriation to come from general fund balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item Five has been moved and seconded. Greg Fruman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Town Services took up this item on Tuesday, October 16th. After discussing the item, a motion was made and seconded to postpone this item indefinitely. The motion carried, and the vote was 7-0-3, with Districts 10 and 11 absent. Conceptually, the committee is in favor of this item, but felt we needed more information prior to making a decision. Specifically, we questioned two things. One, the retroactive pay portion of the item. As we understand this, neither the BET nor the RTM has agreed to this payment, and we're uncomfortable with someone other than these two, these two groups committing, committing town resources. Secondly, it was explained to us that the IRS confirmation of the not-for-profit status of this new corporation has not yet been received. We felt it was inappropriate to allocate money to a corporation until such confirmation is received. Our goal with postponing this item indefinitely, instead of to a specific date, is to allow the proponents of the item to address the concerns and bring the item back as soon as possible. At the appropriate time, I'd like to make such a motion.
Thank you. Pam Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members, guests. We, the Finance Committee reviewed this item as well. We were informed in advance that the Chair of the Greenwich Community Television would be unable to attend the meeting, and unfortunately, that his replacement had a family emergency. The committee therefore voted 12-0-0 to postpone the item until December 2007, since there was no one available to present the item. There was great concern, noted that particularly for the retroactive funding of payments for an employee of Greenwich Community TV, as well as the need to clarify other details, such as the program acquisition, future fundraising, and technical equipment. We did not discuss the item, as there was no one there to respond to questions and concerns of the committee. Our vote, again, was 12-0-0 to postpone until December 2007.
All right. We will take up the Town Services Committee motion first. Mr. Fruman? On behalf of the Town Services Committee.
On behalf of Town Services, we make a motion to postpone this item indefinitely.
All right. That being a motion offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. It is, however, debatable. Discussion on the Town Services Committee motion to postpone Item Five indefinitely, understanding that the adoption of such a motion has the effect of killing it, and it would then have to come back in the normal course of things. Is Mr. Joyella present?
Yeah.
Jim Joyell? You have the floor, representing Channel 79.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you tonight, even though the two committees have made their, their votes and their positions clear, in that I'm, I was really, it's unfortunate that I was unable to be at those committee meetings last Monday and Tuesday. I think we could have answered most of those questions. I know we could have done that. I do want to point out that the BET, we went through that process, and they unanimously approved our appropriation, and dividing it essentially into an operating amount and a capital amount, and the, the approval was contingent upon the creation of an entity to receive, an external entity to receive these funds, and the Friends of Greenwich Television has been incorporated in the State of Connecticut as a non-not-for-profit. We do not have our 501(c)(3) status approved, yet that takes a good deal longer to make happen. The filing has been made, but the, the, the process takes a while, so that, that is all in place. Just, if I may take a moment or two to give you a bit of background on this, you're all familiar with GCTV. This is a little bit like a story within a story here. We're televising our own, our own pitch, but you see Paul Curtis over there, who has been very much the face of Channel 79 for a long time, but there's only so far you can go with a very small core group, and when you have an asset like Channel 79, which is given to the municipality by Cablevision, you, you really have to take advantage of it as much as you possibly can. So, back in January or February of this year, we expanded the Selectmen's Committee for Channel 79, for GCTV. I found myself as chairman and happy to have such stalwarts as, as Paul staying with it. We brought in many others as well, and one of the things that we realized is we were out of the budget cycle. This was January, the budget for fiscal '08 was already well along the way. We were going to have to wait 18 months virtually before we could find ourselves with, with any kind of, of money from the town, although we didn't anticipate needing a great deal. So, we, we went forward with the idea of an interim budget request, and that's what was before the, the two committees last week. Essentially, essentially, it is for a, a staff member, a part-time staff member. You can't accomplish what we're trying to accomplish with Channel 79 with all volunteers. Not everybody is as willing to work the long hours that Paul is willing to work, and so we have devised a staff structure where we think one part-time person can get us a great deal further down the road to realizing what Channel 79 can be for the town. What we are watching right now, and what you'll watch when you see the replay of this in your home, is the signature program, of course, of the channel, but as you know, we also do the Board of Selectmen and, and other government meetings. We want to do a lot more. We want to do a lot more. So, we have created the Friends of Greenwich Television as a fundraising entity, and the staffing will reside there. There will be no headcount for the town. The only, other than this one event here to get us through the night, if you will, the, the only funding that we anticipate seeking from the town in the future will be relatively minor administrative support, and we also hope to find some housing through town facilities, and we think that will happen in the course of, of 2009. So, as we look down the road, we think we've got some very exciting plans for what we can do with this, to add programming from Greenwich Hospital, Greenwich Library, other organizations in town that have so many wonderful programming ideas, bring this thing to the next level, and we really hope that we will get your, your support. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I realize we're kind of outside the way of doing this, and I apologize for that, but we would, we really ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. So you would recommend that we turn down this motion to postpone indefinitely? Further discussion on the pending motion to postpone indefinitely? Mr. Von Keiseling, District Eight.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Chris Von Keiseling, District Eight. I, as they say, conflicted, I think is the new term, about this proposal. There are two parts to this appropriation. One is the $35,000 in personnel salary or payment compensation, and the rest are bits and pieces of equipment and such, and services that are generic to this TV. As I understand it, from the debate that's gone on about this, there are two problems, basically. One, is there a foundation in place to which to grant this money? Secondly, how can a town official, or who, who can authorize retroactively an expenditure and economic liability to the town without an appropriation? There is in this appropriation $10,000 worth, if we approve tonight, or approve this appropriation tonight, there's $10,000 that would be retroactive to July 1st for the personnel part of it. That's in question, has given concern to some people. I would suggest to you that this might be a baby in the bath water, such a situation. There is no problem, as far as I've seen, with anybody. There's no contention or contest over the, other than the personnel costs, the various items that they're looking for to improve the service and programming, satellite receivable, et cetera, and I don't see any reason why that shouldn't go forward. On the question of the personnel, that could be a debate, whether that's an appropriate format. I would remind you, if this is postponed indefinitely, it does, as the moderator mentioned, in effect, kill the, the item before us, but does not in any way stop the First Selectmen's Office from bringing back a similar appropriation request in the December meeting, which is only a month or so away. So, I put that before you as a consideration. You could kill this indefinitely right now, in other words, take it off the table and do it, and hope that it comes back in December, or you could not postpone it indefinitely and simply reduce the appropriation by the amount of the personnel costs and contention, and put that off on the side for the time being. Those are your choices. Thank you.
Further discussion on, on the motion to postpone Item Five indefinitely? All right. This being a procedural issue, I can call for a voice vote. So, if you support killing this item tonight, you should vote in favor of the motion to postpone indefinitely when I call for the vote. If you would like to consider this further tonight, you should vote against that motion. All those in favor of the Town Services Committee motion to postpone Item Five indefinitely, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried. So, that is the final item to come before us tonight. I do have the results of the two votes that we took. The vote on Items One and Two, which was the Community Development Block Grant Resolutions, those in favor, 179; opposed, zero; abstaining, one. Those two items have carried. Item Number Four, which was the appropriation for the satellite dining facilities at Nathaniel Withersall, those in favor, 179; opposed, zero; abstaining, zero. Those items have carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, meeting is now adjourned. Remember, we do have a special meeting scheduled for next Monday, with committee meetings on Wednesday, district meetings to precede the special meeting next Monday. Thank you all for coming, and have a safe trip home.